Yep.
I'm from Georgia originally, but um.
Okay.
That makes this one.
Yeah.
Divorce.
Yep.
Yes, getting ready. Different than previous.
Yeah, five days. I'm calling the.
I'm from Georgia originally.
Denver 12?
Good.
I'll take that. Everybody's nice about.
Hold on one second. Yes, getting ready. Didn't work that previous.
On the agenda, 1A is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have any changes to the agenda or motion? Yep, Dr. French.
Yes, I would like to move that. Ah, let me make sure.
On the agenda, 1A is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have any changes to the agenda or motion? Yep, Dr. French.
Yes, I would like to move that. Ah, let me make sure.
On the agenda, 1A is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have any changes to the agenda or motion? Yep, Dr. French.
Yes, I would like to move that. Ah, let me make sure.
On the agenda, 1A is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have any changes to the agenda or motion? Yep, Dr. French.
Yes, I would like to move that. Ah, let me make sure.
Is anybody in the meeting via Zoom here in the room? Making this a good word. Yes, Dr. French.
Well, yes, I would like to move that.
Figure that out. We're gonna listen to me and Dr. French. If anybody is in the meeting via Zoom here in the room. Making this a good word. Yes, Dr. French.
Well, yes, I would like to move that.
Figure that out. We're gonna listen to me and Dr. French. If anybody is in the meeting via Zoom here in the room.
Making this a good word.
Okay, what about for the board?
Thank you so kindly.
It's too late because that would be too late. We need to put it on the agenda before the end of the month. You see what I'm saying? Because January is gonna be too late. We need to go to the right.
Okay.
Okay, we're trying again. Okay. So we've called the meeting to order. The first item with the second item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Dr. French?
Yes, I would like to move that items for D, E, and F be changed from action to information only.
Okay, so items D, E, and F be changed from action to information. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
I'll second any motion, that motion.
All right. Reverend Mack has seconded that motion. Julie, are you gonna pop that up or should we just do a voice vote for that? Okay, so it should pop up on your agenda? In Board Docs? Not yet. Why don't we just do a voice vote for that? So the motion is to move items for D, E, and F from action to information. All in favor of that item signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so do. Oh, yeah, and Ms. Coakley, I know you're on via Zoom. How do you vote on that item? She may not feel that. Okay, that item passes if Ms. Coakley. We'll have to figure out how to get her in here. And then, so do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Yes.
I have a motion from Reverend Mack to have a second to approve the agenda with the.
Second.
Second? Okay, are we gonna do that, Julie? Uh-uh, we were just, we were doing Dr. French's changes, but. Well, that's okay. Let's just, is every, all those in favor of approving the agenda with those changes signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, I may have just unnecessarily did that twice. All right, so under, the next item is 1, 3. We're gonna do two things here. One, I want to review Policy BDE, which was just passed out to everybody. And then Reverend, and Reverend Mack is gonna talk about some changes. You wanna do that first?
Okay.
Okay.
So you will see on your agenda outline, uh, two items in reference to the liaison for the Policy Committee and the ad hoc board representative for the ad hoc committee. So requests have been made in changing out those individuals. Dr. Frazier was currently serving as liaison and Dr. French, who's serving on the ad hoc committee. So those requests were made for a change. So we will go through that today, though the ad hoc committee person is an appointee by the board chair by policy. So you will, we will do that outlined in the order of the meeting today. But also, the policy liaison is recommended by the Cowal Chair, and that is voted on by the board, and we will go through that process today to make those changes. So wanted to give you that background information as we go through the, through the meeting, the Cowal meeting on today.
All right, so as the committee of the whole chair, I'd like to recommend Dr. Kristen French as the committee liaison for the Policy Committee. I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It was my understanding that it was a Policy and Personnel Committee.
Um, it, in our original policy, it was the Policy and Personnel Committee, although in the last couple of years, our practice, there really hasn't been a lot of personnel things for us to handle as a committee. So I think that'll be something that we may, we're gonna be bringing some policy changes forward for this specific policy, and we can discuss at that time if we want to continue with Policy and Personnel, or whether.
I would suggest that we, we leave it as is until we have a meeting to discuss that change.
Okay, well, we're gonna, Dr. Postaway, do you want to add anything about the, taking the personnel part about, out that that I may have?
I don't recall when the board decided to do that, and I don't think it was a formal vote. I think it was at least two years ago that the board made two changes in that policy. One impacted the Operations Committee, which now meets with out in finance, and the other was to move strictly to policy, because the only personnel matters that come to you will come in executive session. And if it's a policy regarding personnel, it's under policy. That was the reasoning at the time.
All right, thank you. Dr. French?
However, the policy isn't changed. It still says that it's the Policy and Personnel Committee, and it's mentioned two or three times in the policy. So it seems that that's still the position. And I, I would agree with Dr. Frazier that if we're going to change the policy, then that's the time to change the name of that liaison.
Okay, so we can, when we bring the policy forward in December, in January for some change, we can adjust that. Right now, it'll be the Policy and Personnel Liaison. So do we have any other questions? Okay, if we can go ahead and vote on that item, Julie? Yep, so everyone in favor of Dr. French for the Policy and Personnel Liaison, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. And the other thing I just wanted to share with you all, because this is our first committee of the whole with our new board, is I passed out Policy BDE to everyone. This is our board policy for committees, our board committee policy. And there's two things I wanted to, three things I wanted to point out, I think, no, two things. On the second page, in the first paragraph, in the second to last sentence, it says, "Agenda items that receive unanimous consent of the Cowal will be placed on the potential consent agenda for upcoming board meetings." So that means on action items that we discussed today, if they receive unanimous consent, unanimous vote, then they will, at the end of the meeting, we'll make a list, and those items will go on our potential consent agenda items for the board meeting. At the board meeting, when we approve the agenda, we also are approving the potential consent agenda items. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that. Yes? Ms. Coak?
We have a special called meeting today, not a, or this is our regular meeting. So that, that's why we're going to go ahead and put it on this agenda instead of the next board agenda?
Um, for that, we do, this is our regular meeting. It's not a special called meeting. So I think that's something, as we vote on each item, if there's something we feel like needs to go to January, we certainly can discuss it. I think some items are first readings and will have a second, so we could do first reading today and second. I mean, just, just for new members of the board, sometimes when we have in committee of the whole an item that might pass 8-1, somebody at the end of the meeting, when we're looking at the potential consent items, somebody might make a motion to put an item like that on the potential consent agenda. So just wanted to let you know that. And then, in the last page, under Committee Meetings, in the paragraph that begins during discussion, you'll see we have a nice little timer over there with Miss Champagne. So during discussion, committee, this is just for committee of the whole right now, during discussion, committee members shall have a maximum of two minutes each to address each agenda item, including, but not limited to, questions asked and answers, and answers received, for a total debate time of 20 minutes on any one item. At the end of 10 minutes, or when each member has had an opportunity to participate, the committee chairperson shall call the question and take the vote. If additional discussion is required, the committee chairperson shall require a two-thirds vote of the committee to continue debate for a maximum of another 10 minutes. So basically, it means that when you're asking a question and somebody is responding, the timer will be going, go, that two-minute timer will go. So when the two-minute timer buzzes, I'll ask, either I'll ask you, probably today, then the committee liaisons, as they get comfortable, will ask you to finish up your question. And today, we'll go around and ask each person if they have a question, and then if somebody has a second question, we'll do that. All right, any questions about that? Dr. French?
So I just want to clarify, so you're saying that the timer counts both the question and the answer? For instance, we ask staff for clarification for something?
That's what the policy says.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions? Okay, um. All right, Julie has just said that Board Docs is not cooperating on the voting side. They are working on getting that fixed. So we'll just, for our items that we vote on, if we do voice votes, we'll call each name out, just so we can keep track of those votes. And the next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Postaway?
Thank you, Mrs. Darby. We have quite a bit to cover today, so I will make my introductory remarks very brief. I have two items under Superintendent's Report. One is a response to the Shared Future Group to make a presentation to the board. As you'll see on the slide, on the screen, the Shared Future Group, um, let's see. Erica, if we could go ahead and just advance to the next slide. The Shared Future Group was led by RIO's organization. One of the key facilitators was Dr. Jackie McLamore. She'll be making some comments with you today. And then the next slide simply shows you a picture of when the Shared Future Group made a presentation to the board and an auditorium fairly full of community members in January of 2019. I'll turn the matter over now to Mr. Kennedy, who will introduce the Shared Future Group and Dr. McLamore.
Thank you very much, Dr. Postaway. So we have three members of the Shared Future Group here today, two members here and one on Zoom. The two members here are Maurice Washington and Eric Tom, and then they will have some comments. And then also, as Dr. Postaway indicated, Jackie McLamore, who's a part of the group also. She will give a part of the presentation via Zoom. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Washington. And Eric, if we could unload that PowerPoint.
So, protocol, keep masks on, right? Okay, thank you very much. So, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. I also want to congratulate each of you for having earned the trust of the citizens of Charleston County to serve as our elected representative to the CCSD Board. I'm certain you guys are having lots of fun, correct? All right, all right, sounds like you are. You know, members of our committee, many members of our committee, watched the orientation, new board training and orientation. And I want to congratulate you on a very fine job, a really fine job. But watching it reminded us of the fact that we have so much in common, CCSD and Charleston Shared Future. We value this friendship. We value this partnership. COVID-19 has created some separations, but we are so committed as a committee of people from across Charleston County, some 30-plus strong, and we're committed to this partnership with CCSD and, of course, the Board of Directors. So we, simply stated, we are just grassroots. We're grassroots people from all walks of life, different backgrounds that, when we originally came together, we quite frankly didn't like each other. But we, we willed ourselves through the difficulties and the challenges. And today, I can honestly say, I think we're in love with one another. And so Jackie, as Dr. Postaway indicated, McLamore is going to share with you some additional background. And Eric and myself, we're two co-conveners of the group, will be back to talk with you and give some closing remarks. So with that, Dr. McLamore?
Thank you very much, Maurice. It's my honor to have an opportunity to speak with all of you today. As Maurice and Dr. Postaway indicated, my name's Jackie McLamore. I was the team lead from RIO's Partners for the Charleston Shared Future Project from 2017 through 2019. I recently relocated to the Low Country in September of 2019. My 30 years in this field has been helping people and organizations make changes that are important to them and to their communities. And this project, this work, is an example of that. Next slide, please. The purpose of the Charleston Shared Future Project was to increase community involvement, understanding, and support for improving educational outcomes for all of the Charleston County School District students. And we did this by taking a systemic look at what the current state was of education in CCSD and exploring what the possible future states might be. Maurice indicated to you that this was a very diverse group of about 30 people. It included students who were matriculating through the school, through high school at the time, other community members, educators, business people, a real range of folks who came together for these purposes and who remain committed to strengthening educational outcomes. Next slide. The process that we used was a scenario planning process. And in this way, the scenarios were a strategic tool for exploring what the possible futures were for the Charleston County School District, the students and their families, and the community members. In this way, the scenarios are not a way of trying to forecast or predict the future. Instead, what it did was, it synthesized the results of past reports, the Willie Report, the Avery Study, the Clemson Report, all of those reports that you will find detailed in handouts that you have received in previous meetings, and also learning journeys. They, we brought in experts from across the country, virtually, and some in person, and most importantly, from the lived experiences of the scenario team members. And through this work, four scenarios were created, and these scenarios were structured in a way so that they met these four very important criteria. They were relevant, challenging, plausible, and clear. Next slide, please. There were many results as of, from this process. I just want to highlight three of them here. One thing that resulted from the work that this scenario planning team did together was increased understandings about what system-wide transformation in Charleston County would require. Maurice alluded to one of the other things that was a result, and that was that relationships were established with people across the community who came with very different perspectives and histories, political identities, their interactions with the school district. But they shared an interest in improving educational outcomes. A third result was this group developed more capacities, more skills, and they sustained and, I think, increased their willingness to take actions that would support transforming what they all felt were, was a vitally important educational system. That's why they were present and involved. Next slide. Four scenarios resulted, and through this process, there's no, usually the process results in three or four, sometimes five scenarios. It depends on the data and on the decisions of the working group. In this case, the four scenarios that came out of the process are listed here. I'm just going to lift up two of them, and you can read the details on each of the scenarios in the reports. The first scenario is called 1835. And by the way, the committee, part of the process was using the research and the data that they synthesized to identify what each scenario was called. In the 1835 scenario, what they found was that this scenario would show that legacies of an 1835 law that prohibited teaching people of color to read and write caused inequities and mistrust to continue across the system. That failure to act on research, failure to act on analyses stalled progress across the district. And the fourth scenario, which is called Tech Town, I'm mentioning this one because as we worked through the process, this was an outlier. This was the one that people thought, oh, this, we're not sure that this can happen. But as they, again, synthesized the data and worked through the process, it did rise to the surface of being a plausible, credible, and relevant scenario. And in this one, there were technology advancements that brought immense progress to the district and also increasing disparities. There was not an ability to have sufficient infrastructure to support advancements and ways to really identify and support all of the things that were going to be required of teachers, administrators, families, and meet the widely disparate needs of students. And so while we identified this as an outlier with the advent of the pandemic, we certainly saw some of the things that were listed there come to fruition. Next slide, please. So these scenarios were presented and tested at community meetings and several dispersed community conversations. And all, there were about 1,000 people who participated in these meetings, about 500 at Berkeley School. And then we had a number of community conversations where the scenarios and the work of the teams were shared, and there was a testing and opportunity to assess whether the scenarios were relevant, plausible, challenging, and clear. So with this, I'm going to now transition it back to Eric.
Thank you. Where we are now with the Sharpe Shared Future Group, post-2019, there was really kind of loose associations as we came back together, a meeting here or there, the challenges of meeting over Zoom. And without, within ourselves, clear responsibility, leadership for what we need to do. So through these groups, the idea of having conveners that are simply in charge of setting an agenda and getting us together on a regular basis was floated. And so the group selected Mr. Washington and myself. So Maurice and I are the co-conveners of the group. We have committee meetings weekly. We meet with the group on a monthly basis, and we're starting really to ramp up our efforts. We have committees to expand our reach into the community. We really want to get more engagement with more people, different stakeholder groups, and figure out a process to do that, and figure out our own ways to fund that ourselves. And as we ramp up, we recognize that there's ever-increasing needs to engage with the community. I'll pass it over back to Maurice.
Thank you, Eric. So we do have a request, a recommendation, one in which we forwarded to this wonderful body several months ago. And we are recommending that you request Charleston Shared Future to engage broader conversation with Mission Critical, and that you re-engage these facilitators to do additional work in the various communities outlined, West Ashley, Mount Pleasant, North Charleston, Peninsula City, Charleston, James Allen, John's Allen, to inform them of the status and plans related to their 2019 recommendations, to solicit further input on COVID and post-COVID actions. I think it's worth noting at this time that Charleston Shared Future does not represent these facilitated or facilitator teams. They did their work independently of our work, but we appreciate the work nonetheless that they did on behalf of the education of all children here in Charleston County. We make this recommendation because we understand these facilitators were trusted in their representations, and we know CCSD can improve its communications with parents and families. As Eric touched on, every Monday morning, without fail, from 8:30 to 9:30, Charleston Shared Future, we're on the phone. We're talking about education and what can we do to improve it for all kids? How can we build lasting, meaningful relationship with the governing board and the administrative staff of CCSD? How could we, once again, re-engage grassroots communities across Charleston County, reconnecting them with you, the governing board, and you, Dr. Postaway, and your incredible staff? We're committed to helping. We're committed to a true partnership. A critical part of accomplishing these tasks rests with the re-engagement of. Mission Critical. They set you off in a direction, you act, maybe not on everything, but on most things. The job is not complete. We want to be a part of the ongoing dialogue between you and the community. So having said that, if you have any questions, we are more than happy to, uh, respond. Alright, but we do appreciate having this incredible opportunity to appear before you this afternoon.
Thank you very much to two of you here and to Jackie on the Zoom, we really appreciate, um, y'all's efforts. And for those of you who were not on the board yet, when, when this process of Chair of Future happened, it was amazing, so great work and I. Do we have any, do I can go around and see, do we have any questions from any board members? Dr. Frazier?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
My question may have been answered, but I have two questions, are we just allowed to get one that's.
We're doing one first and it's related to this Shared Future, um, presentation, yes ma'am.
Understand that, my first question is, at what cost is this to the taxpayers for this process to continue?
Mr. Washington, did you have a?
Yes, ma'am.
Thought on that?
Yes, so first of all, I want to thank Dr. Frazier for the question. Uh, it represent an interest in what we do, therefore we appreciate it so very much. We are not here asking for financial support from the Charleston County, uh, school board. In fact, as Eric pointed out earlier, we have created subcommittees to support our efforts. So we have, uh, a communication slash fundraising committee where we. Ourselves will go out and raise the necessary funds. Uh, we have tasked each of our members to be the first contributors. We're looking for, uh, a nonprofit entity that will serve as, um, stewards of the funds that we raise. Uh, and, uh, so no ma'am, we're not looking for any financial support from the district. Very good question, appreciate you asking.
Thank you. Dr. French, do you have a question?
Yes, I noticed that Mr. Tome, uh, apparently graduated from U V A. And we now have a contract with U V A for a turnaround program in the schools. I would love to know what other models you consider besides turnaround initiatives? For instance, community school models.
Uh, it's a great question, unfortunately, I, Charleston Shared Future had nothing to do with that process. And I don't know that we looked at that, um, or any others. Uh, with, within the Rios Group, we did a, uh, quite a bit and with our meetings, um, of history into Charleston County. Uh, and the different statewide acts that lead to some of our situations we have now. But we were not looking to try to create in our scenarios what we, uh, sorry. Recommendations on what Charleston County School Districts have to do. We were really trying to write stories of what could happen as we look fifteen and eighteen years into the future. And use that as engagement points to get the community involved. And get these different parts of the community to, to lead to their own conclusions and push for action. But we weren't delivering certain action points on any type of curricula or anything else to face.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Green, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, um, if you can, Maurice, you are, if either one of you, um. Kind of outline how you see this work and, and I want to make sure I understand that. It would be the shares, the Shared Futures Group. That would be leading the discussions in the communities as opposed to those that were. Um, that were chosen to do it in the previous time, is that right? Or?
I think, uh, given that education is everybody's business. I think there is room for lots of different people to lead community-wide conversations around. Education and support of, uh, the education of our children. Uh, certainly, we will do as we have done in the past, play a lead role in the discussion. Uh, pretty much along the same lines as Mission Critical did back in twenty nineteen. And we certainly would encourage other groups interested in the education of children and adults. Uh, to join this community-wide discussion, we have, we are ambitious. We hope that this thing catches fire in Berkeley County, Dorchester County. Because this should be a tri-county effort at the end of the day and not just a single county. Thank you for your question, Ms. Green.
Ms. Herterich?
Yes, and similar to Ms. Green's question, to start that conversation within the community. Are you planning to start it in Zoom until we get past the point of COVID?
Uh.
Or is it just?
Yes, yes, um, but it, we, we are open to meeting in small groups. Uh, we are looking at, um, engaging, uh, public relation, uh, talent. Uh, web development, uh, social media, uh, communications, a host of other things. I think you're going to see some very fun stuff and creative stuff coming out of Charleston Shared Future. I, I guarantee you, this is the kind of movement that's, uh, that's grassroots. Uh, and I think it's going to make a big difference given, well, post-COVID. And so we do have a post-COVID committee as well, so yes, ma'am.
All right, Ms. Coakley, I know you're, I think you're on the Zoom now, do you have any questions?
Um, no ma'am, not at the present moment, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Ms. Coates.
Um, so Maurice and Eric, thank you, it's great to see you again, both of you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I really, really thought the Mission Critical meetings were, were something that we did right. Or as close to right as C C S D has done in, in a while. And something that should be tweaked and improved and continued. Um, I think where Ms. Green and I are confused is. We've had zero contact with Shared Future product, project as a board or as individuals since January of two thousand nineteen. And I don't believe, and I made a point of doing so. I don't know that you or your representatives attended any of the Mission Critical meetings. And I certainly don't know of any board members that are aware of that you've got meetings, committees, that y'all are meet. Y'all haven't engaged us into those conversations. So how do you take these two unconnected, parallel tracks? Which was the Mission Critical where the board approved some things we specifically said we needed from the community. Please tell us what you think about these things, please tell us anything else. We worked with the district to come up with the facilitators and then board members committed to attending each of those meetings. How do you take that and connect that to a group that has none, that we've never engaged with? That has had community meetings that we know nothing about, um, other than the time you thirty met over a course of a couple of months. And created the scenarios. So how, how are these two together? I, I one hundred percent believe in the concept, I'm just thinking. We now have two sets of bodies that say, we are qualified to lead the concept. How do you mesh the Mission Critical facilitators with what you're proposing? Because you're proposing their work reengage and every so often I hear Shared Future in it. When during that Shared Future wasn't in it. So back to Joyce's question, what does this look like?
Point of order.
Point of order, isn't that time?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's time, I, I, Cindy did ask a question there here as guests. I'm gonna let them answer, answer the question as I would do with anybody else.
Point of order, you said that the question would be asked and answered in two minutes.
I would ask the board's indulgence, uh, by majority vote that we override the policy and allow them to answer the question.
Yeah. Okay, I know we have a motion from Ms. Coates and to override.
Them speak, let my motion.
Override the policy to allow, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a, um, motion and a second, all those in favor of.
I, I have a question.
Yes?
Will this apply to the rest of the meeting?
It will not, it won't apply to this particular question, I'm sorry, Mr. Mizzou. Uh, it is, so I'm all at, I'm sorry, I took your turn.
I'm sorry, that, that question, that motion was very specific for this part of the agenda. Um, asking the questions for, um, the Mission Critical, um, report. So if there's a continuing motion on another section, you can make another motion, but that's specifically for this pending question.
Okay, so this, for this pending question, any other questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Alright, Eric or Mr. Washington, whoever wants to.
I'll try, thank you very much, good question. Some of the best conversations we had after our scenarios were developed, presented were these, uh, World Cafe. Conversations we had at schools, we invited people from the community, split them amongst, amongst, uh, small tables. And started really having, um, in-depth conversations. And so I think, uh, the idea of what Mission Critical did and these facilitators have the opportunity to do some better, uh, best practice sharing between us. Uh, we saw a great opportunity to engage on a deep level with parents and teachers and students. And I don't know that we really followed through with it, we saw other groups doing that very well and the idea that we want more. And so we want to be able to engage with those, uh, facilitators, with those efforts, so that we can, uh, combine and be aligned. Uh, we don't want to be the same thing they are, we, we understand that there's going to be some differences. But we do want to be able to have access, uh, to the different stakeholder groups in our community, so that we can have really meaningful conversation. Our work will be communications through quite a different levels, in-person meetings, certainly more so post-COVID. But, um, you know, through regular email campaigns, websites, social media, we look to be much more involved and engaged. And we will certainly look for more, uh, input from you on how we say best, uh, engage with the board and align through the work and efforts.
Thank you, um, Ms. Waters.
How do you plan to, um, incorporate historically, um, disengaged groups? So, you know, typically the people who come to these types of meetings are people who are already engaged, but we need to hear the voices of those who aren't. So do you have a strategy for that?
Good question. Uh, so we have a, uh, recruitment committee. Uh, with a laser focus on bringing such individuals to, uh, the table. Most of our discussions are done at a grassroots level, uh, really grassroots level. And, uh, you know, we have journalists, uh, we have, uh, community activists. We have students, uh, we have educators, we have business people. It's a very diverse group of individuals to ensure that every voice. Is given an opportunity to be both represented and heard. And, uh, when we did, as Eric said, the engagement community-wide, many of those engagements. The original one started at Burke High School, over five hundred people came out and participate and hundreds thereafter. So we will continue to work at that level, uh, and above. And, uh, I, I, I hope you guys would help give some directions as to how what we do can mirror. And support what Mission Critical, uh, is doing. At the end of the day, we just want to be another arm for this wonderful body.
Thank you, thank you. Reverend Matt?
So no question, just a comment, I just want to share that when the Share Future Project did start out. Uh, and the group came together as a body, uh, they were all on different pages, uh, not all thinking the same thing. But I guess after three months of working together, partnering together, talking together, eating together, laughing together, and even sharing some tears together. Uh, it, it showed me how a diverse group can come together and work together with common sense and goal. Uh, and then went out into the community and actually, uh, engaged just that type of population throughout the, the tri-county area. Which in my opinion was very impressive, so I like the fact of what the Share Future Project Group did. Uh, I like sending to though as we move forward, if the board elect to move forward, and I hope the board does. Uh, I, I like to see more interaction with the Share Future Project with the board, uh, in talking. So as we begin to move forward with board directives and changes and goals that are being set as, as you guys are. Hopefully will be meeting with the community that as these responses come back to us. We can be better engaged as far as making sure that the goals that we're setting, the directors that we're setting are marrying up with what the community is saying. Uh, and the work that you guys will be doing or have done in the past has really been successful. And along, aligned with, uh, Mission Critical, uh, action as well. So, uh, I'm super excited about the reconnection, uh, in the assistance and the goal and helping us to achieve. And maximize those goals, because at the end of the day, everybody wants the same thing, the best education, uh, that C C S D can offer. And I think we all have different ideas of how to get there, but the end goal is we're all trying to get to the same point. But the mere fact of what you guys modeled as a group coming together, uh, very, uh, off-stain. But then coming together to saint, it's just like with the community, everybody has an idea of how to get there. The, the, the goal is how do we work together to get there and you, you showed that in your beginning process. I hope that as we move forward that we can engage that piece and work along with the board to make it happen, thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Matt.
Very much.
I do not have any questions, I know that Dr. Frazier had a second question, so I'll just see real quick, who else?
Okay. My last question is, we've had so many initiatives to come through. Seventy-five count over the years. And I know that we all have witnessed those situations where we said that we're going to change. The educational system so that we can have positive outcomes for all children. How is this going to be different than what we have gotten in the past?
Uh, great question, um. Uh, first of all, we, uh. We, we started this group, this committee of people, uh, two years ago. And. We, we didn't, we cherry pick folks because we wanted to make sure we didn't have group think. Uh, and so we had some real challenges with liftoff. But at the end. I've just never seen a group that. Came to the center of the room. Uh, one big group hug, crying, uh, really feeling each other's vibes. And we have not looked back, uh, so we have a real common interest. As I know you do, Dr. Frazier, I've seen your work in the community. To, uh, ensure that every child receives a fair. And the best education that, uh, any school district can deliver. So I could only ask that you judge us on our longevity in terms of how long we have hung in there with each other. And the work that we continue to do and the infrastructure we continue to try to build, to be of service to you guys going forward.
Perfect timing, thank you. Does anyone else have another question, Dr. French?
Yes, I do, I, I'm concerned that this group doesn't seem to represent any school communities in District Four. It, there's very little representation there. And I also want to point out that actually one of the Shared Future Group members was a facilitator for Mission Critical in D four.
Yes.
And my experience of that, uh, process was not, uh, not the same as Ms. Coates. I felt it was extremely flawed, uh, there were, the discussions that we had in the meetings were fantastic. But the reports that came out of them were slanted and it wasn't just our district. Um, I would like to see it moving forward, if, if you're going to do this. Or if any other entity is going to reach out to the community to respond to the initiatives that came out of Mission Critical, which primarily impact District Four. That you go to school improvement councils and P T As first, go to the school communities. To talk to them about how they feel about these proposals, thank you. And I guess I ask, will you commit to that?
Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm certain that, uh, I speak for the entire group. Uh, like you, uh, we're focusing on the future where we will be spending the rest of our lives, so we can commit to that.
Alright, Ms. Green, do you have another question? Herterich?
No question, thanks for your time.
Um, how do we get in touch with y'all? Maurice, I know how to find you.
Uh, our communications committee will, uh, follow up, we'll have our website and our email.
Uh, our communications committee will, uh, follow up, we'll have our website and our email address and, uh, send that to everybody, because we would love your feedback. Um, really appreciate your questions and want to have further dialogue.
Thank you, Ms. Waters, Gavin.
No further questions, thank you.
Reverend Matt, I do not, so thank you very much for being here, appreciate you following up. Dr. Post, thank you, Dr. Postway?
Um, thank you, I'm going to yield the remaining time, um, to save the, um, the board, uh, from, uh, the overrun of time on this agenda item, and I will mention it in special recognitions under the regular board meeting, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, the next item on our agenda is the Strategic Education Committee, and, um, Ora Hergich is our liaison for that. So she's going to be addressing these items, and, uh, this is y'all's first time doing it, if you need any help.
I'm here to help.
Thank you, is this early college high school? Um, Dr. Postway said she was yielding her time on that, and she's going to address it in special recognition. That's what, okay? Okay, Ora?
Great, good afternoon, we have two items on the Strategic Education Report today. Uh, just a note before we get started, there have been several questions from the board in regards to learning pods. Those questions will be answered this week and move for further discussion in January. So we are going to start out with item 3A, an update on the school choice process, and I'm going to call Ms. Belcher, thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, it's good to see everyone. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague who's on Zoom, uh, Robin Jones, who, who, with her team, leads our school choice process across the district. I think it's important to call out that the school choice process had to change a great deal last year in light of the Mission Critical. So rezoning of some schools, setting new attendance zones, and then the pandemic hit. So some of that had to move at the very last minute online and not in other forums. And Ms. Jones and her team, uh, moved very quickly and very flexibly to ensure that the process still went smoothly. So, Ms., Robin, would you mind talking us through the timeline and the process?
Absolutely, and in lieu of time, I'm realizing that we have, we, we don't have a lot, so I'm going to speed through, but good afternoon and, um, good afternoon, Board Chair Darby, and Board members, Dr. Postway, and, and our team members. Our school choice process is an annual process, and, uh, just like everything else, we're making some adjustments this year, making more, moving to more virtual format. Um, I have presented, we, I think in your packet, it may be on the screen, that you'll see that we have a timeline that we try to adhere to. With the 2021, we always talk about it in a year in advance, uh, because these are students to be accepted for that school year. So the process typically launches around December, and we want to thank so much Communications Department, who's working with us to create wonderful, uh, resources, um, so that parents who are not able to maybe join us in a traditional way of learning about schools, that they'll have a lot more resources. So you'll see in the timeline that I presented, um, it's on the slides, and I believe you probably already have it, but that we, um, we will launch, um, so, at the end of this week, typically beginning of next week, most material, most, most items are already on a website, because we are following a thirty-day notification, um, timeline for any criteria schools. But we have a variety of schools, we have thirty-one schools that participate in our, our online application process, and that's everything from, you know, our, uh, chart, it, it, it could be our, um, magnet schools, our constituent magnets, our Montessori magnets, our charter schools, our IB programs, et cetera, et cetera. We have a lot of programs, um, so thirty-one programs are participating in the online application process. That application process includes a paper application for those who need it. We, um, have trends, we will transition and won't have our, um, our school fair, our school showcases, which we had included all schools, but we are now narrowing it to our choice schools through a virtual format, somewhat like we're doing now. But we're working on a plan for that to occur in, in, in late January. You see on the timeline that we do have benchmark dates that we try to meet, um, because a lot, several of our criteria schools require some testing, require auditions, et cetera. Um, so we have to stick within that timeline so that we can have our decisions to our families in a reasonable amount of time, so they have a, a period of time to make the decision, because there's a rolling, if they decline, then there's someone else has an opportunity to, to roll into that, that, that available seat. So with that timeline already presented to you, um, there's highlights there, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. But I did want to move forward to saying, I, I just want to thank the Communications Department. They're creating these wonderful videos that I think are, are going to serve a, a, a better role, um, even those who aren't applying. When you watch the videos that are, are focusing on the unique programming in each one of our choice schools, if you never get to go there, you feel like you visited, you learned a little bit. So one of the, one of the, one of the schools that we, um, were, is the most recently, uh, most recent addition to our school choice process, which was Frierson, which is transitioning to a full Montessori program. So it, it is in its third year, and they are thriving, and, and so the featured video, and we wanted you to see the kind of example of the kind of quality videos that are being produced. We will focus on Frierson, so if we're able to show that video, um, I'm going to end with that. Um, I think most of the information you need is, is, is in your packet. We do have a list of all thirty-one schools in the packet, and the grade levels that, um, they will accept. You might see that some schools have certain grade levels, but they're only accepting for other grade levels, because schools are in transition as we, as we close some programs. So I don't know who's going to drive that, um, video. So I hope it didn't move too fast, but I think most of the information is available to you, um, so you know our bench logs.
Okay, I think, I'm being told that we don't have that video ready to go, so.
I think we're just, we're experiencing difficult, uh, technical difficulties.
It sounds like we are having to run from two different rooms. Yeah, so we do have it, but we're having tech, technical difficulties connecting, so why don't we just move on, if that's okay?
Can we open up for questions?
Ms. French, would you like to start? Uh, I have no questions, thank you, Ms. Waters?
Reverend Matt?
No question.
Ms. Darby?
Um, no questions on this topic.
Dr. Frazier?
I just have one question, and my question is, how does school choice impact the fact that some of those schools, does not adhere to diversity enrollment? How are we managing diversity in this, in the, um, process?
Ma'am, does you have a specific school in mind that you wanted us to speak to, or what?
Do you have a, do you have a way of handling the issue of diversity, I'm not going to choose in school?
Under, under Mission Critical, as, as you may know, there was a significant priority to ensure that there was more racial diversity and diversity of socioeconomic background at Buse, as well as that academic magnet. Um, in that process, we did a lot of outreach for Buse specifically, as well as Academic Magnet, but I'll talk about Buse first, in terms of mailings and invitations to kids who met the, at the selection criteria and invited them to apply. As you may know, we did see quite a bit of movement in the entry class of Buse in terms of diversity, it's much more diverse than it was in previous classes. Academic Magnet, we saw modest increases in the amount of socioeconomic diversity, but less so in terms of racial diversity. So one of our big priorities in this coming year is a more proactive recruitment strategy, where some of the faculty, as well as the students at Academic Magnet are reaching out to schools. We are again sending those invitations to students to meet the academic criteria and inviting them to apply. We've also adjusted the selection process to have an emphasis on schools that are zoned for high poverty, so that those students who come from those communities have a little bit of a leg up within the selection criteria. But in general, uh, recruitment and putting a lot of emphasis on that is our strategy. And we don't consider ourselves having completed that priority for Academic Magnet yet. Dr. French?
Yes, um, I'm a little concerned about the virtual nature of the process. Um, how will you help to communicate with those who have already demonstrated limited online engagement with the schools? And also, how would limiting school fairs to only the choice school locations impact applications district-wide?
The, the school choice fairs will be virtual, they've always been, uh, four fairs, and they were located in, in geographic areas. Um, for example, um, there would be one on D9, and the student, the schools on D9 and D3 would come to that particular fair. But our countywide magnets would be at every fair. So we are hoping to host, um, in that same manner, but introducing, um, an opportunity for parents to, to select the school they're interested in, and then they're going to a session specifically with that school. We'll do three sessions, and then generally we'll have a school choice. Um, and the school's choice staff will have a, 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 a question and answer opportunity, not specific to a school. And, and I, I'm sorry, I missed your first part of that question.
The first question is, how are you going to engage families who have already demonstrated a lack of engagement online?
Well.
So this is virtual.
Well, with the school, that's why I was hoping, and I know it didn't work out, but, um, we are, we are giving, every school will have more of a opportunity to see inside it. And yes, it will require someone to, to log in, you're right. Um, but with the limitations with, with COVID, we are not allowed, are not able to bring people in. We will continue to offer our academic, excuse me, our, uh, application assistance events, we plan to do them virtually. And, and social distance allows, we plan to do a few in certain communities where we have probably less of, of, um, of parents who are, are, well, that, let me just say this, more parents with barriers, uh, maybe some language barriers. We will, we are working toward planning, uh, in-person application assistance events. But until we get to that time, it's hard for us to say, will that work or not, based on social distance limitations?
Ms. Darby, may I just add one caveat to that? Um, I think you were asking specifically about the fact that some of our kids don't, um, uh, sign on regularly. Um, we tend to go, the invitation letters and all of the recruitment goes through the school level, where the schools, the parent, uh, advisors and others in the school have a strong relationship with the families, so they do a proactive reach out to make sure that that information gets to them.
And, and it is our goal to make sure they're, they're aware of the information, but I can say that not everybody in CCSD wants to lead their neighborhood schools. So I won't say that everybody wants to apply.
Dr. French, if you have any additional questions, we'll come back. Ms. Green? Ms. Coates?
No ma'am, um, Dr. French took mine, I was, uh, wondering about the, uh, recruitment criteria, thank you.
Thank you, we have any additional questions? Okay, we will move now to item 3B, Mission Critical, Partial Magnet to Constituent Magnet Student Data. And we will also call on this Belcher's team, Ms. Jones and Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Roberts is online, and if I have, if you have a specific data question, she's the expert and ran this data to make sure that it was accurate. As a, as a reminder, one of our Mission Critical priorities was the, the movement of partial magnets to constituent magnets. The concern, I, my understanding, because I was not here at that time, was that the board was concerned that some of these magnets may not have a sufficient representation of local students within the student body. Um, we wanted to make sure that we came back to this after the forty-five day count, so the grid that's in your packet, the data table, I know it's very tiny print, but essentially aims to show you last year as compared to this year, and historical data over time from the particular areas of the county, uh, and that are admitted into our partial magnet or now constituent magnet. So I think the, the headline here is that most students in these schools are coming from their constituent, uh, zone. So overall, the change resulted in eighty fewer students living in Charleston County and attending, who are not zoned and do not live in the constituent district. It went from four hundred and twelve students across all of the, um, magnet schools in 2019 and 2020, down to three hundred and thirty-two students in 2020, twenty twenty-one, this year. So in general, I think the concern that these don't reflect the local community, we're actually seeing that they tend to.
Great, we'll open up for questions, Ms. Coates, would you like to start again?
Yes, thank you, so, um, I guess my, and I appreciate that you were not here at the time, but that was not the point, that was not our, our intention. And in fact, the first printed documents we received and discussed in 2018 read, revise our magnet and partial magnet programs to ensure fair representation of our diverse student body. And the discussions were never to change magnet to constituent as the goal, that was a step in the goal. And while we have made sure that more kids in the constituent zone attend the schools in their constituent zone, while I don't want to be critical, that didn't solve the problem of inequity, and will continue, will exacerbate it as the years go on. If we don't take a concentrated effort to make sure there's a fidelity of operations in those magnet schools, tell me why that school gets more points than the school down the road, are they truly utilizing those points for that magnet purpose? And we still have more magnet choices in Mount Pleasant than we have in any other area of the district. North Charleston has, beyond Montessori, only two magnet choices. And that is, um, Zucker and North Charleston Creative Arts. And we still have this hodgepodge that says St. Andrew's Math and Science is a math and science for West Ashley, I have no West, I have no math and science option. We have accelerated education at, um, in D23, I don't have, uh, uh, that, that thing in North Charleston. So I, I, while I applaud that we've gone to constituents, and that is, that cleared up the busing, that, that did a lot of things to make the operations easier, that was never the goal, that was a step. And I am, I'm, I'm very afraid that this district is shifting away from the goal, which was that all kids have access to those. Again, I'm sorry, I mean, that might be a much longer conversation, but we've somehow morphed our reports into, we wanted to set up partial magnets to constituent magnets, we're done. We're not done. So I know you can't answer it, but that's going to be something we have to talk about. Okay.
Ms. Waters?
I actually want to hear the response to that question.
Do we want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll ask it when I.
Okay. Oh, sorry, sorry, yeah. Um, I'm not sure I, I know the question, it, it, the, the piece around whether the ma, the constituent magnet is a stepping stone towards a broader magnet strategy, is that what you're asking, ma'am?
That's not what I'm asking, that's what I'm telling you, that was how this conversation began in early 2018. And we seem to have gone to one step, and now we're not moving to continue the original plan, which was equity and access for all kids across the district to all magnet options.
So I guess I want to, so, in, in saying that, I was asking the same question, what I got from what Ms. Coates was saying was, really my question is, is there a plan to expand magnet options in District Four?
Uh, right now, there is not a plan to expand magnet options in District Four that I'm aware of. Dr. Postway to my.
It is not in a board goal, and I think this is, um, probably that, um, Reverend Mac or Mrs. Darby can address the board goals, that the staff was working on board goals.
Right. Do you mind if I go before you?
Sure.
Ms. Darby?
Is that okay, Ms.? So I, I just want to address what Cindy's saying, and, and to help Ms. Belcher out a little bit, because I was one of the people pushing for some of these changes. And I think Ms. Coates is right, it is a step, and one of the things that we were trying to do is that we had, can, we had magnets, partial, partial magnets all over the place that had all kinds of different rules, we were providing busing to some, not to others. Some of those constituent magnets, we, you know, we're, we're serving the other side of the county, and we weren't, we weren't being equitable, and that we didn't have those kind of options for all of, in each area of the community. So that was really what we were trying to accomplish in this first step. Um, if the board decides that they want to look at more of those options for North Charleston, I wholeheartedly support that. But that's, that's something that we need to discuss as, as a goal. But I, I do, I agree, it's a, it is a, it is a step, I think you all have done a great job with it, we now are much more consistent and, and equitable. We just need to decide, is there more that we need to offer in other parts of the community than what we have right now? And, and that's certainly something that we as a board can look at.
So the answer is yes, my students need as much choices as Mount Pleasant students.
I would support that, but that's, right now, that's not one of our goals, that's something we'd have to work on.
Reverend Matt?
So I do not have any direct questions, but I, I think Ms. Coates still has another additional question, I'll yield my two, two minutes to her.
So the, the plan, the, the question is, how did, you know, because I'm looking at a November 2018 document, and I don't think I have any, any new question. The, the question is, we're in COVID, December 2020, but I don't see any, um, I don't think that the, I would, I would say that I think that the board's intent was to increase access to the student population of the district, not increase access to the students that live in the neighborhoods with the schools. And I don't see us going to that direction, and I would like to know what, how, what your plan is to create that equitable education. So I don't think that you're prepared for that. So I don't think that you're prepared for that today, but I think that's something we've got to talk about. If we think that closing off the Mount Pleasant partial magnets to students that don't live in Mount Pleasant did not create an equity in education for our student body.
So I'll respond very quickly. We, um, last year responded to every action that the board took, because a lot of the votes were close votes. So we implemented, uh, what the board voted to do out of the mission critical recommendations or, um, out of some other source of recommendation. And we've asked, uh, the board to consider a priority setting workshop in January, so that we'll know where the board as a whole stands on the issue of school choice, and whether the board believes that choice is the right direction. And if so, then absolutely, whether it is or isn't something the board wishes to expand, we need to address the equity, the access and the opportunity issues. Thank you.
Is that all you have? Dr. Frazier?
Yes, I, I'm just, I just want to make one comment, because I've seen where there were parents who were totally disappointed because my child did not make the cutoff for the application that I completed, so this child could go. And hopefully, and I pray that at some point in time, that we will focus on making all of our schools a place where students might want to go in their communities, and then we won't have this problem of students wanting to go from place to place. Just.
Agreed.
Can, can you just make that a goal, in, with this goal?
We share the goal, ma'am, that the, all our schools here should be excellent.
I hope one day we'll get there.
Dr. French?
Yes, um, I was looking at the, sort of the lower half of the graph. And it looks like in terms of zone, I'm not sure if you had a goal to try to increase the number of students in, uh, attending who are in the zone for the school, but those numbers didn't change much at all, if any. And I'm especially concerned about North Charleston Creative Arts. Are all of the students in the zone, uh, getting into this school that want to?
Robin or Buffy, do you have the answer to that question?
They have a zone. So they, and then it's the students who are applying are outside of the zone. Zone students are automatic.
So is the zone not drawn to include more students? Because it's only 42% of, of the attendance at North Charleston Creative Arts that's in the neighborhood zone.
I don't think it is, I think that's what it was drawn.
I think we want the other 50% from the rest of North Charleston.
Robin, give me one.
In the past, when, when schools did not fill themselves, um, either they were rezoned to add more students or it was open for students to apply, that's how we came up with what we used to call partial magnets. To tell, fill those schools that weren't filling themselves. But there are other programs that also draw, um, interest in, in that general community. But I believe and I understand that there may be zoning changes to come.
Ms. Green? Ms. Coakley?
No questions.
Do we have any additional questions? Ms. Coates?
No, thank you.
Ms. Waters?
No, thank you.
Reverend, uh, Mack?
No, thank you.
Ms. Darby?
No.
Dr. Frazier? Dr. French? Ms. Green?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, that wraps, wraps us up for today.
It will. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, our next, um, area for the committee as a whole is the Audit and Finance Committee. Um, just typically, we just review, um, the activities from the Audit and Finance Committee. And Ms. Green, do you want to do that, or is Mr. Kennedy going to do that? Okay. So Mr. Kennedy, I, somebody on staff, there aren't any attachments on this particular item? I assume they're attached on the board agenda?
That's correct, so we should have four items here. Two of them are, um, uh, reallocations. So I'll ask the board to talk about those two.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. So we have two reallocations presented to the board, uh, that were approved by the Audit and Finance Committee unanimously. Uh, both of them, both of them involve the current sales tax program, which runs from 2017 to 2022. The first was capital maintenance. Uh, that was a sweep-up of 13 projects that had been completed and an allocation toward HVAC project at Morningside, a total of $196,000. The second item that was proposed was a reallocation for the capital construction program, and it was a sweep-up of funds from four completed projects in application of the resources to the James Allen Charter High School Gymnasium project, which had been put on hold until we could see how the COVID revenues were going to affect it. And we're ready now to move forward, uh, with that project, as well as an increase for Stony Field, uh, project that we're in a joint partnership with the city of Charleston. Uh, they were requesting a, um, a flexible overlay on the asphalt track surface, and we've agreed to split that cost with them. Um, and we're, uh, once we get this approval, it'll match up with the city council's approval from the city of Charleston, and we'll be able to keep that project moving forward.
And they're on the board, they're attached on the board agenda, but they're just not on this one, yeah. And we don't have to take any action today until Board meeting.
The, uh, next item is the monthly, uh, capital projects, uh, report, which, again, it comes out monthly. And we've been doing this report for, uh, a number of years, uh, to give the board an indication, um, specific projects, uh, all the projects that we have expenditures for the month, how much we've expended, and, um, and the revenues come in to support that. Uh, so, um, again, that's a typical report that goes through the Audit and Finance Committee, and then gets presented to, um, uh, this, to the board for, uh, for information. And then the last item is the monthly financial report that's related to the General Operating Fund. And so we have two, two approaches that we, uh, we use, uh, during, during the year. For the first six months, the first half of the fiscal year from June through October, uh, through December, uh, we compare, uh, the amount of money that was budgeted and how much was spent and the revenues that came in for the current fiscal year. And we compare that to the same time period like, uh, the prior fiscal year. As a purpose, just to make sure that we are on track. And then in, um, beginning with the financials that we produced for end of December, which we were presented to our Audit and Finance Committee in February, the format, uh, the structure changes. And what we do then was, uh, we actually project, uh, where we were in the fiscal year. So beginning in the, uh, at the beginning of this calendar year, we would begin to do our analysis, and we will provide to our Audit and Finance Committee our assessment of where we will end the year on June 30. That number, uh, typically, uh, deviates some for January and February, but as we get, uh, into, uh, the spring, that number, that number becomes more, uh, uh, more solidified. And we have a lot more, you know, information and data to be able to support what, uh, what we're doing. So for right now, uh, the report that you're looking at, again, simply compares where we were last year, uh, this time. So for revenues, uh, we have about $3 billion more in revenues than we, uh, had last year, uh, this time, uh, through, uh, October. Yes, and, um, and so that number then is, um, is, um, that's driven by additional local revenues coming in. And then for the expenditures, uh, we have an increase about seven, $7 billion in, um, in salaries and several million dollars, several million dollars in, uh, benefits. And that's driven by the additional staff that we have. We have new, new schools that came online, uh, the Puka River CAS, uh, the CE Williams, and, um, Lucy Beckham over in Mount Pleasant. So new, new teaching staff, new, new administration, uh, for those, that's driving that up. And then the last, uh, major increase in expenditures related to primarily about charter schools. So they, they are ADM, the average daily membership in terms of student count has increased. And so there's, so they're, their allocation is based strictly on the, on the, um, the number of students in that, and that they're ADM, the average daily membership. And so that's driving those numbers up. So that's, those are the reports coming out of our Audit and Finance, uh, Committee. And I will say that, uh, although there's some barriers between this year and last year, uh, at this point, we don't see any, uh, any, any issues with those.
Okay, thanks, Don. Are there any questions, uh, going around the table, stopping on the, Dr. French?
Hi, I'm just trying to remember, I would, I actually attended that committee meeting, and I thought that they were saying that they would provide the November numbers to, to you.
I'm sorry.
I thought that, I thought that during the meeting, and you'll remember better than me probably, uh, didn't the, wasn't there discussion of getting the November monthly report to you for this meeting? I'm not sure.
Report to me for this week? I'm not sure if I follow the question.
And so, so we.
Because the Audit and Finance Committee was just a few days after the end of the November, I remember.
Yeah, so, so, so the month, I mean, the month ends at the end of the month, and then it takes, uh, a staff, a couple of weeks to actually close the books. And then once they, uh, close the books, then they review the results with me. Uh, so if that's, um, later this week, I think Thursday, I'm reviewing the results of November, and then we will present that to the, uh, Audit and Finance Committee in January. And, and the other thing that you may be, so we, for the full board meeting, uh, we, we issued financial statements last Friday for last fiscal year, which I distributed to the group, to the board, a short while ago before the meeting started. And so we will be presenting the results of those financial statements in the next meeting this afternoon.
I do not.
Mr. Matt?
No, I'm good, thank you.
No, thanks.
Ms. Coakley, do you have any questions for Mr.?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay. Just what I like, no questions.
Thank you.
So that.
That finishes the Audit and Finance portion? Exactly, and so now we're going to move into the policy section. Um, so Dr. French, you're.
Take it over.
All right, thank you. Uh, so the first item on other board committees is Policy FF, naming the facilities. And it looks like the committee to do this has come back with a recommendation to, uh, name the new Center for Advanced Studies, the West Ashley Center for Advanced Studies. Uh, the document attached is just about policy of naming the facilities. Does anyone have any questions? And this is an action item, isn't it? So should we, should we entertain a motion first?
So move?
Second.
Any discussion? Shall I go around the room? Ms., Ms. Green?
Are we voting on the machine?
First, we're discussing. First, we, we had a, a, a motion and a second, and so now we're having discussion.
No questions, thank you.
No questions. Ms. Coakley? Uh, we'll come back to her. Um, Ms. Coates?
No, thank you.
Ms. Waters?
No.
Reverend Mack?
I apologize, no question.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Coakley. Uh, Reverend Mack?
No, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Darby?
No questions.
Dr. Frazier?
Yes, I just have one question. When I look at the community members who served on the naming, um, committee, where is it that we had the sick folk and, because it looks as if a lot of these people in that committee were CCSD staff members? I mean, do you get a good representation of the community?
Dr. French, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor can address that, she's the staff person.
And I'll speak louder than this one.
Well, the mic, mic is better for the people listening remotely, I think.
Thank you for that question, Dr. Frazier. We did have a significant number of, um, community members to participate. We started this process, um, well before March, and we definitely worked with our community members, um, as we got down, looking at our, um, our options for names. We had five options, and then they, we, we narrowed it down to one. The community members listed were the community members who, who were a part of the final, um, voting process. But we had several parents who were involved, and I, I left my, my document up there, but I can definitely show you who the parents were and how, and, and what they, and where they represented. So I can, I can make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. Anyone else? I think we're good, so I'll call the vote.
Julie, yeah, we've got the computers working, so you should be able to vote from the board docs. Yeah, why don't you just ask her, Dr. French, how she votes?
Okay. Ms. Coakley, uh, if you aren't seeing the vote on board docs, can you just let us know your vote?
I approve.
Thank you. So moving to the next item, which is. Oh, I'm sorry.
And it'll pop up.
I apologize.
That's okay, so you, can you see that, and then you just acknowledge what the vote is?
Okay, the vote is unanimous in favor of naming the school West Ashley Center of Academic Study. Center for Academic Study. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the vote was unanimous to name the school West Ashley Center for Advanced Studies. Thank you. Uh, now we're going to Policy IMG. There are some modifications to this policy, which has to do with service animals. Couple of them are minor, but the main thrust of it is that there, we will not ask for medical documentation and that the owner of a service animal must annually submit documentation of vaccinations, immunizations, and veterinary certification of the health of the servicing animal.
Move for approval?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
So what, what precipitated this change?
That, I believe that came from staff, right, Ms. Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am, so it did come from staff. We had a couple of service animal issues in the, in the schools last year, and so I actually took a look at the policy, performed quite a bit of research, discussed this with School Boards Association, and Beverly Pilkey, who manages the Department of, um, Exceptional Children. And the, these were the changes that we thought were both legal and, um, would support our schools a little bit better than our current policy.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, then I'll come back around the other way. Ms. Coakley, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Harderick?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Green?
No, thank you. No.
Ms. Dr. Free? Okay. Ms. Darby?
No.
Reverend Mack?
No, thank you.
Ms. Waters?
No, thank you.
Any other questions? Then I'll call the question. Can you let us know your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, the vote is unanimous in favor of the proposed changes to Policy IMG. Next on the agenda are policies, changes to policy CFC, GCF, and CFA. And we moved at the beginning of the meeting to changes to informational items. I have, I wanted to share just a little bit of background in case there were any questions. Uh, having looked at these policies, uh, Ms. Coakley, Dr. Frazier and I had come up with some changes that we wanted to make, to make them more consistent, and to adjust some of the practices of assigning interim, uh, appointments and when hiring occurs for those. And as we talked to legal counsel, I realized there were some other policies that needed to be addressed as well that interact with these. And I wanted to get some more information from Human Resources about the process before we, uh, do any action on these. So I'm hoping to bring these to you in January. If anyone had anything that they want me to include in my research, that would be helpful. But I will just add to the background that's on the agenda that one. But I will just add to the background that's on the agenda, that one of the reasons that we were concerned about these is that we actually have seen that there's some interim appointments that have stayed in a very long time. And in fact, one of our high schools has had only interim principals for about two years. And so, we want to make sure that this isn't still happening. And we feel that having a principal who's committed to the school and is planning to stay there a long time adds to the stability of the program and better outcomes for students. So, that's one of the reasons that we're looking into this. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, if the impetus is about interim principals in their tenure as interim principals, why is the concern with the transfer of school principals? What exactly about changing this policy is going to stop the interim principal issue?
So, my understanding, okay, let me find my notes, because it's going to help me a little bit. So, my understanding is that we have, if someone vacates a position, then we usually appoint an interim, because we need to do that relatively quickly. This could be at the principal level, another administrative position, but it might be up higher in the district office as well. Is that correct, Dr. Postaway?
I wouldn't know. I can't say that it's correct that we usually appoint an interim, but we do want to fill a position as quickly as possible.
Yes, and so sometimes an interim is appointed. Transfers can, may lead to some types of professional development within the school district. But we were, I believe I had this in the original background, but maybe I didn't. We were also concerned that if we don't have competitive hiring for each principal position, that we might be shortchanging the students and shortchanging the process to get more talent and more diverse representation in all of our schools. Should I, should I ask the follow-up now, or do I have to wait until another? Why don't you wait, because your time's almost up, and I'll come back to you. Okay. Reverend Mack?
I guess I'm trying to get to the point of the concern of the interim appointment, because when we begin to look at finding the talent that's needed at the school level, a lot of it has to do with the timing of the year, when there may be a need for an appointment for a principalship, and principals being assigned elsewhere. When I said elsewhere, I'm not talking CCSD, I'm talking throughout the state or throughout the nation, and trying to attract that appropriate talent. So, I guess my question is, you know, we need the superintendent to be able to, to act in an appropriate manner to make those assignments, whether it be interim or permanent appointment. We just need to make sure that we're not interrupting the learning curve or the learning process here to the degree of the fact that we are limiting to what the superintendent will or will not be able to do. I guess I'm a little bit concerned about how we're trying to carve out the interim appointment, because that is very critical. We just don't want to put a body there, and I believe you said it in your opening statement, that we want to make sure that, that we're finding the right talent. And I think that's, you know, the superintendent's responsibility to make sure that whomever he or she plays at the school is, is the right talent or for that fit at that moment, until we're either able to find someone else or to retain or to maintain that individual in that position. So, I'm just, just concerned as to what is it that we're really trying to accomplish here.
Okay, and I would say that part of what we're trying to look at is making sure that the time that interim serves is more well-defined, and when we would start advertising, and how we would limit the amount of time we advertise before we actually start interviewing to make that replacement. Doctor, I mean, Ms. Darby?
Yeah, I just, I'll just share some input. So, as you work on these, I personally do not support the changes to Policy GCF, professional staff hiring, where we add, the proposal adds, the Senate, the Board shall review and have final approval of such recommendations, which is referencing principal hires. I don't think that, my personal opinion is that we, as board members, don't have, you know, we're not involved in the interview, interviewing process for principals, and there's 85 principals or more sometimes. So, I, I think that that's a staff responsibility. If we're responsible for hiring and approving, then we're responsible for the principal performance. And I want Ms. Belcher and Dr. Postaway to be responsible for their principal's performance. I personally don't think the Board, that's not part of our government's role for us to be responsible for the principal, you know, their performance. So, particularly in that, that change, I don't support. So, I just want to go ahead and get that out there.
Thank you. Dr. Frazier?
Yes, I'm specifically concerned about District 33, where we have witnessed an instance at our school where it's almost a year, and we have not had a full-time principal. And I want to support a policy that would give some limitation as to how long an interim principal will stay in that role, because it impacts student learning, stability of that school. So, I think that if given the opportunity, we also know that when there is going to be a vacancy, that we plan ahead, especially if we're going to be moving principals from one location to another, that we not let a principal stay in a position or any staff member. And this has been an ongoing situation in the, in the school district.
Okay, and just to clarify, you don't want an interim principal to stay longer than policy recommends, is that right?
Well, I think that we ought to define.
Define that better?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Green?
I, I, I really don't have any. I, I don't support a lot of the recommendations for, I mean, on the principals for the same reasons that Kate recommended. And, and I, you know, I do agree with trying to limit interim appointment. But we know, I mean, the real, and I don't know in any individual situation why there may be a longer period of time for a school. I can't imagine that it's because somebody isn't trying to get the district. So, I mean, I, I could see some rationale with that, but I'd, I'd have to know exactly the length of time that you're talking about, because, I mean, I just think in the real world, those things happen. Nobody really wants it to happen, but if you look around, you know, it happens all the time with interim appointment. So, you know, I guess on that, I'll wait to see what we come back with in terms of the time.
Okay, Ms. Harderick?
That's the same with me, and I echo Ms. Green and Ms. Darby, and the Board being involved with hires.
Okay. Ms. Coakley?
I actually think that we should be involved with the hiring process due to the fact that, just like Dr. Frazier said, we want to make sure that, you know, when they're there, we want to make sure that we're giving ample amount of time to hire. But we also want to make sure that the people that we are putting there are people that are actually qualified for the positions. And I do feel like with Board members having a little bit of, you know, say-so in who's being hired, then we're actually finding out that we're putting people that are qualified where they need to be.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question?
So, when we, when we, in my world, when, when you do process organization, you have a problem, and the object is to seek a solution to it. And I thought you did a very good job in the beginning. You defined the problem that we have interims that are lingering. Dr. Frazier, you said something I'm not sure that, that you meant to say, but interims are full-time. So, we're not, we don't, I want to make sure we don't assume we have a part-time principal that's not in the building. They're just not, they're just not a permanent, right? They are full-time working. They're working every day at the school. So, that's, so that would be an issue that I want to discuss wholly, totally, and separately from this, because that is a concern.
Okay, that is a concern.
But as it relates to interims, you, you define the problem that we have interims that get appointed and linger. So, I think you have solved the, I don't think having Board and constituent Board consent of hiring solves the problem you defined. So, we're gonna, we're gonna have to define the problem that having consent of constituent Boards solves. It's not interims, because that doesn't speed up the process. I think that your solution is very articulated very well. Once an interim appointment is made, the position shall be advertised internally and externally according to Fair Hiring Practices, as described by the Equal Employment Opportunity Act of 1972. Interim appointees may apply for the position, but shall have no advantage over other applicants for the position. I think there's your solution to the problem you defined. Your other two problems you're going to need some solutions to are that timeframe. And if that timeframe has to be exceeded, there has to be a, a communication to the Board as why. But the rest of these changes, that sentence solves your, that sentence solves your problem. That and adding a sentence that creates some timeframes.
Okay, and I just want to mention that after a conversation with legal counsel, it's probably not the Equal Time Opportunity Act that would apply, but there are some law that we want to look at.
Okay. And may I ask one follow-up legal question, please?
Well, I think some other people have questions. May I come back to you? Ms. Waters?
My only question, or yeah, question or recommendation would be to also explore this idea of the timeframe piece, because the interim option is used as a tool when you can't find, or the timing isn't right or what have you. We don't really want to put people under constraints that they would not have the ability to, you know, live up to, or standards they wouldn't have ability to live up to. So, I just want to make sure that with the timeframe piece, there's some language around forgiveness, if they're not able to, you know, due to the extenuating circumstances, find a placement within that appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reverend Mack, sorry.
No, no question.
I do not either.
Dr. Frazier?
Yes, ma'am, I have one comment to make. In the real world, we would think that we shouldn't have a problem in the hiring process. But with CCSD, over the years, we've had a problem with cronyism, racism, and favoritism. So, I'm hoping that when we look at our policy, that it might be able to impact some of the employees that has been involved in the hiring process throughout the years in this district.
Thank you. Ms. Green? Ms. Harderick?
No further questions, thank you.
Ms. Coakley?
No further questions.
And Ms. Pits, do you have another question?
Yes, this is probably for our attorney. The section being, being proposed for change is underneath the Terry Act. Does that portion of that policy only apply to the Terry Act?
Oh, yes, she and I discussed that, and that was one of the reasons that we wanted to look at some, another section of policy. Because as you, am I corrected? As it's written, the only thing they've done, or the proposals have done, is specifically for a carried employee who quits in the interim in the middle of a year. This doesn't cover our staff as a general rule. Okay. Right, that's one reason I want to go back and look at it more carefully. And I, I wanted to answer to your earlier question too. Actually, let's see, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna keep going, and then I'll come back to that. Ms. Waters? Reverend Mack?
No, thank you.
Ms. Darby?
No.
Oh, okay. Dr. Frazier? And the three of you had no further questions, right? Okay. One thing that I wanted to point out that, that makes me concerned that there's more than just an issue of interim staying in a long time. And, and also, the concern is, what happens when an interim gets converted to permanent without a competitive process, which is why some of the language you talked about, Ms. Coates. Right now, we have five interim principals and one vacancy, I believe, at one of the alternative learning programs. At Daniel Jenkins, it looks like there's a vacancy, is that correct?
No, ma'am.
Okay, is that an interim appointment, or? There's just no information in the directory that we received for that position?
I, I would ask the attorney how to respond. She's asking if we have a vacancy at Daniel Jenkins. And I said no, and she's asking a follow-up question.
So, I'm asking, is the, is the principal at Daniel Jenkins interim or permanent?
He's an interim.
Okay, so we have six interim principals. They're, as far as I can tell, they're all in Title I or high-minority schools. And so, that suggests to me that there's an issue that we're using interim principals more, more often in a racially discriminatory way. So, we need, I think that's part of the issue that we need to look at.
May I respond?
Sure.
Yeah. If you want to speak about any specific school or six schools in this instance, since it would be easy to identify them, I, I would be happy to speak further to your questions if we could do that in executive session, because there are some, some privacy concerns, some FERPA concerns. It could be very easily revealed if we were to have a personnel discussion about specific schools in public. And I hope you'll take my word for that. We have some very unusual circumstances. But your point is taken.
Right, and, and the other thing that I'm concerned about is that at Daniel, not at Daniel Jenkins, at Baptist Hill, we've had interim appointments back-to-back, where those principals had two jobs at the same time.
Again, I, I would be happy to discuss specific sessions in executive, specific instances in executive session.
Dr. French?
Thank you.
Dr. French?
Yes.
This is Dwayne, the Parliamentary Rules Reasons. Can we not speak about confidential employment issues? It's not on the agenda, and it's not appropriate for open session.
I was only speaking about public information, that's, but I'm not going to ask the...
But when you signify a political school that identifies the position that you're talking about.
You're right, and that is all public information. We know who are at the school.
Dr. French, can we please not speak about confidential or ask any information about confidential personnel recognitions at the schools?
I did not ask for information.
Dr. French, we're, we're getting information from our Parliamentary. So, is there other items you want to address on, on the policy?
I, I have done it, unless someone else has a question at this time.
And that's for all three, right? I mean, we kind of...
Yes, this was for all three, yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to know whether we need to move that to executive session?
Well, Dr. Frazier? We don't have, we don't have an executive session on this agenda, so we can't move it to this executive session now.
Somebody can put it on, we could, something that, it ends up on a future executive session. We can't change that, add something to the Board Executive Session during this meeting. So, we can ask Mr. Maseek about that later. Okay, so any other items, Dr. French?
Those are all the items in the policy agenda.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, the next item is under Other Business. We have a couple of action items. The first item is 5A, Reverend Mack, the addition of a Board member to the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. So, at this time, we currently have an active Ad-Hoc Committee, Committee, I should say, where Dr. French was originally appointed to serve on that committee, and has now been elected by the Board or approved by the Board to serve as the liaison for policy and personnel. And at this time now, I'd like to make an appointment of Dr. Helen Frazier to serve on the Ad-Hoc Committee to review the Superintendent Evaluation Process. Just wanted to make that up.
Okay, so Reverend Mack has made that appointment, so those changes have all been made. The next item is...
That doesn't need to be voted on, because he can make the appointment, but I think we need to make sure that we put it on the Board Agenda, because this isn't... Yeah, but, but it does, it has to be appointed through the Board Agenda process. So, let's make sure it's on there, just to be clear, because you can't take affirmative action in a committee of the whole that binds the body.
Yeah, he can...
At any time?
Yep.
Okay.
He can appoint them.
Okay, okay.
Okay. The next item is a Board Workshop Proposal. Reverend Mack, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, so, at our January 11th Committee of the Whole Meeting, we'll, we would like to have a... a two-hour workshop to build some common ground toward priorities that the board will establish over the next two years. I think it's important that particularly that we have new board members that are currently serving right now, that we establish some goals together collectively as a board moving forward. And this workshop will be to build common understanding and agreement on the unique challenges and the opportunities of the district, and also to identify positive high-level priorities and to build common grounds toward where the board desires to go over the next two years is important, as and critical that we're all on the same page in developing these goals and initiatives moving forward. The effort is to work together collaboratively with staff, with the community as a whole. And as we begin to move forward, this is, this will be one, I would say, of circle that we should have as we move forward to making sure that we are staying aligned with what we set in reviewing these initiatives and these goals. But we will start this in January at the committee of the whole meeting. And as we move forward, we will begin to adopt other dates for sessions of workshop. I think workshop is important and is critical over these next two years as we move forward.
So this is an action item. I would like to make a motion that we expand the time of the January eleventh committee of the whole meeting to hold a facilitated two-hour workshop for the purposes stated in the action item.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Coates and a second from the courage to expand our committee of the whole time in January. Do we have any questions? Dr. French?
Yeah, how will we set the agenda for this workshop?
So we will begin to, we will, we'll have an initial outline that we can start with and we'll share it with the board in working on how this workshop will be identified. We will have a facilitator, I would imagine, to help us, guide us in developing or governing and doing this workshop. But if there are any suggestions or ideas that you may have that you feel that we need to incorporate, but we do have an agenda that we will share with the board.
Reverend Mack, can you clarify that the facilitator is not a paid vendor?
Yes, so, you know, they are, they are unique individuals throughout the district or the county that's willing to help and aid in assisting us as we move forward. But the facilitator will not be paid, is on a volunteer basis, and has worked with us in other cases and areas of facilitating meetings for us. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I have one question. I would ask, and I will be glad to give this to staff, but every time I talk about the original goals, I seem to get a response that there seems to be some disconnect. These are them. I would ask that any conversation starts with the goals that were published in a November twenty-six, two thousand eighteen press release that are on the November twenty-six, two thousand eighteen board minutes, because this, and the document that is dated November twentieth, two thousand eighteen, because those are where we took the CCSD strategic plan, the Clemson Equity and Inclusion Plan, the advanced ed recommendations, and we created the eighteen-twenty goals. And I want to make sure that we're very clear on these were the goals, because any future goals have to rely on the fact that we did, that these are done, or why we're abandoning these and going with others.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. French?
Are there twenty-nineteen goals that should be included in that as well?
There were eighteen-twenty goals. They were a two-year set of goals. Two thousand eight, that were approved as the two thousand eighteen dash two thousand twenty goals.
Okay.
It's before that. It's the original one. That's a growth from that one, I think.
Okay, because this is November twenty.
Okay, mom, mine's in black and white, so I guess. All right, if everybody, any other questions?
No question. I just wanted to add, so just know that this is a two-hour workshop. So we will not be able to consume everything in one setting, but definitely will be able to spread this out throughout the year as we begin to have other various workshops as we move forward. Just wanted to add that.
All right, if everybody can please cast their vote. Ms. Coakley, how do you vote? Oh, she did? Okay, great. Okay. All right, that motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the early release proposed for December eighteenth. Dr. Postaway, would you like to address?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. And we have a second from, is there any?
Ms. Green?
Discussion, or can we call the question?
I have a question.
All right, so first, Dr. Postaway, do you mind just telling us why this is on the agenda first, and then we'll do questions?
It's on the agenda because we wanted to celebrate the hard work that our teachers and other staff members have done. There isn't a whole lot we can do to show our appreciation. This is a mere token of our gratitude for their having done one of the most amazing and difficult jobs on the face of the earth, and that is pivot a number of times to provide every parent in Charleston County, to my knowledge, with the choice of educational settings that they want for their child during the pandemic. It is also a note of gratitude for some people who, I know you find it's hard to believe, but this is not a hyperbolic statement, who have not had one day since early March that they have not worked for Charleston County schools. It took a lot of effort to get schools up and running, a lot of advanced planning, and continuous round-the-clock attention to safety protocols from upgraded HVAC filter systems to marking the floors, to getting equipment deployed, and of course, for teachers, totally rethinking their craft a number of times. So it's just a small way to say thank you to the staff of Charleston County schools, even though we realize it does create a bit of an inconvenience for some working here. So that's our recommendation.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Frazier, do you have a question?
My question, I guess it was just answered. Will this one entire staff, teachers, students, everyone?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. French?
Yes, I have a question. I'm concerned that this is coming kind of at light notice for teachers, because they've already made their lesson plans. And they, I've heard from a couple of teachers, they're gonna have to adjust their plans, they're gonna have to move some things around for their students. But I've also heard of at least one person who was concerned because they had scheduled an IEP meeting at this time, and it's, you know, those are hard to schedule and not take for those kind of disruptions to be a problem. You know, I appreciate the gesture, but I also had heard that mostly, most early release days are not early release for teachers.
We notified teachers last week of the, all staff last week of the possibility of the early dismissal. I imagine if there's someone who wants to go ahead and hold a parent conference or do that sort of thing, they could, they're teaching online, they could continue. But I'll bet that the overwhelming majority of our six thousand eight hundred employees will accept the gesture gratefully.
All right, any other questions? Ms. Green? Bur, Ms. Coates? Walk, Ms. Waters? Reverend Mack?
No, I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Postaway and the staff in recommending this suggestion to our teachers and to our staff in a way of saying thanks. And I think it's a great gesture, and I foresee there may be other opportunities that we may try to find ways of saying thank you to staff for all the hard work that they do. And hopefully we can show more gesture of thanks for the great work that they've done. So thank you for this recommendation.
And I'll echo that. I've talked with some people who live in other parts of the state, and they were very jealous that we had been in school face-to-face with the numbers we had since September eighth. Their district was only able to do that in November. And I think Herculean is probably an understatement. I'm sure there are people in this room who have not had a day off since whatever that was, March seventh. So.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, okay. So March thirteenth. So I have, and I just, I want to echo, I whether, I hope we pass this. I think it is just a small gesture, but I want to say to all of you, you have done an amazing, amazing job, and you are keeping our kids as much as you can, learning. And I know there's more we can do, but I don't know that there's more that you all can do. You've done an amazing job, so thank you very much.
The frontline workers.
The frontline. Yep. All right, so can we go ahead and?
Please fully vote for this?
Yeah, please, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote for that. Oh, Ms. Coakley, can you vote on that item?
I forgot about me. I'm gonna vote, but I just want to chime in and say that although it is a wonderful gesture, I've been getting calls and emails as well from teachers. And from a parent standpoint, we've been working face-to-face, you know, we've been working full-time parents doing this stuff with kids, and a lot of people really do feel like it's much more of an inconvenience than it is to have this early dismissal. I just wanted to let you guys know that I understand that you thought it was a good gesture, but from some teachers and from parents' perspectives, this is a bit more of an inconvenience than a good gesture. Thank you.
And is your vote in favor or opposed? She voted no. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so that motion passes with seven yeses, one no, and one abstention. I'm not sure that she was voting no. Ms. Coakley was voting no. Ms. Coakley, are you still on? Were you voting no on that item, or were you voting yes and giving us your thought?
I was voting no and still giving my thought.
Okay, got it. Sorry, I'm sorry. I just didn't, I didn't hear you correctly. Thank you. All right, so that motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is determining the agenda items that'll move to the potential consent.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The items that have garnered potential consent are Section 1C, Dr. French's election to the liaison, Section 4B, the West Ashley Center for Advanced Studies, C, the First Reading of Policy IMG, and Section 5, the Board Workshop. And I would like to make a motion, and it would be at the desire of Ms. Coakley, since she's the dissenting vote, if we could put the early release on the consent agenda, or if she would prefer, we can leave it in the regular agenda, since it was not unanimous. But Ms. Coakley, that would be your decision, because you're the dissenting vote.
So Ms. Coakley, are you okay if what Ms. Coates is proposing is that we put Item 5C on our potential consent agenda for the board meeting? So that means it would be approved when we approve the agenda? Or would you like us to not do that, and we'll discuss it again during the board meeting?
You can move it, that's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so is that, is that in the form of a motion, Ms. Coates? So the motion is to move agenda items 1C, 4B, 4C, 5B, and 5C to potential consent?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, do you have a second?
One second.
Okay. Can we do a voice? Okay, you got it? Okay. All right, please vote. Okay, oh, sorry, that motion passes. Closing items are, we have a board meeting in just a minute, which Reverend Mack will tell us what time he wants us to start, and then our committee of the whole meeting on January eleventh, which will be made the whole plus the board workshop. So we'll hear some more from staff on that, and then our board meeting on January twenty-fifth. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Reverend Mack, when do we reconvene?